Okay, August 20th, Planning Board meeting is now open. I hope everybody's enjoying this wonderful heat. Already August 20th, our next meeting will be in September. And that's kinda hard to believe. So, we have a very short agenda tonight. First thing, Doe Run subdivision, continued public care and Form A for Pine Street.
Would you like to say a few words?
Form A for Pine Street.
Oh, I don't believe Frank's gonna be here tonight.
No, Frank, uh...
He's planning to be?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, he wasn't. But I didn't know that he was putting in for Form A.
Well, there are two Form A lots on Pine Street that are concurrent with the subdivision.
Oh, so it's not...
No, it's not.
Oh, okay. So, did he give us a letter? Did he do anything?
Uh, yeah.
Update?
Yeah, we just got commenting, um...
Highway Department, I see.
Yep, and I just wanted to let the board know that Frank, myself, and Ed Buckley met on Monday to discuss the location...
Keep talking, keep talking. Wayne is just making sure everybody at home gets to hear what we're saying.
Hey, I look like I'm red in that TV over there.
So, Ed Buckley, the Highway Superintendent, Frank Gallagher, the project engineer, and I sat down on Monday morning. We discussed, first of all, the location of the water line, and the impression I'm getting is once the Highway Director may be amenable to lifting the moratorium on cutting into that roadway, if the water line goes down the road and the applicant were willing to redo that portion of the roadway completely. And once numbers were thrown out and some figures were thrown out, Frank's reaction was, hey, that's not nearly as expensive as I thought it would be. And when we started talking about some of the related costs and issues with putting it off the shoulder of the road, for instance, taking down about eighteen, uh, not eighteen, eight to nine trees that are eighteen inches in diameter or more, and having heavy machinery on the edge of that roadway, and bringing in fill because there's some steep drop-offs there off the shoulder of the road, the cost difference between doing the water line in the roadway and totally redoing the road with an overlay or milling and a resurfacing versus doing it off the shoulder is probably negligible. So, that's where we stand now. Frank was gonna go back and run some numbers and look at the pros and cons of both, but if he is willing to redo that roadway for that area where the water line's going in, then the Highway Director said he may be willing to lift the moratorium and put a new moratorium once it's done. So, the water line may still go down the side of the roadway rather than off the shoulder. That was the major issue that was discussed. Another thing that was discussed was potential mitigation for that culvert and bridge to the south of the pump station, since it's narrow and with the additional traffic of twenty-nine new houses coming in. And nothing definitive was decided. It was something that was requested that the Planning Board consider. I had a conversation with Steve Ventreska, and, you know, if the Planning Board were interested in having the applicant contribute something to be held potentially in the future if something needs to be done to that culvert or that bridge, if it starts to deteriorate because of the additional traffic, that's just something to think about as the project moves forward.
Okay, so, I'm reading Highway's comments. Does he say any of that in here? I don't see...
No.
I don't see any mention about...
I don't believe he does. Now, naturally, just for reference, Steve Ventreska let me know that the Hill Street culvert that was repaired several years ago, a few years ago, the cost of that was $240,000. Obviously, it wouldn't, I don't think it would be reasonable to expect the applicant for this project to flip the bill for something that potentially may need to be done in the future. However, you know, the Board may wanna consider having the applicant make some kind of contribution for the town to put aside in case the wear and tear with the additional traffic over the years causes or necessitates some repairs to that culvert.
Where is the culvert?
It's under that bridge where the road's very narrow. When you take the left to go up where Fair Lane is and you take the left, the bridge is right before the sewer pump station on the right. It's where those guardrails are. There's a culvert under that roadway. So, the concern is that with twenty-nine new homes going in, that the additional traffic, not only the construction equipment during construction, but also twenty-nine new homes, the wear and tear over the next several years will make that culvert deteriorate and make it necessary to do some...
How long, how old is the culvert? How old is it?
That's a good question. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Yes, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Richard Smith, 156 Forest Street. I moved here in 1959. I drove my bike over it, so it's that old. I would assume it would've had to have been rebuilt or redone when Courtney Way was put into effect, as well as its guardrails up on it now. And seems to hold up pretty well with oil trucks and everything else that services all those areas down there.
So, you think it was improved when...
I know it was improved.
That it was improved?
Yeah, it was.
It was improved.
Then, why don't we just look into that? Because I don't wanna go...
All right.
I don't wanna just ask for something and then put it in an account somewhere, and then twenty years later, we're wondering what to do with the money.
Exactly. They dropped water over it, through it, and everything else.
Okay. Because it might've, it might be narrow, but narrow, it is what it is.
If it was repaired fairly recently, then there might not be an issue with adding traffic to it.
Right. So, and Highway's not gonna, he's not gonna be aware of it unless we bring it up to him being new.
Yep.
I did like his comments, though, about letting the developer put the water in the road instead of disturbing all the embankment, all the sides of the roads, and all the trees and roots and everything else. I think that's a, would be a smart way to go.
Well, even, you know, with the moratorium in place, I know Ed was concerned about setting a precedent, but if the applicant, if the cost works out and they're willing to, you know, redo the entire area that they're disturbing, then that wouldn't set a negative precedent.
Well, again, I think what it does is it shows that Highway Superintendent has common sense. And a lot of times in the past, just because it was written down on paper that we have a five-year moratorium, that means that there's no touch, no discussion, you know, let's not, let's ruin all the trees and the side of the road and everything else. Yes?
Do I have to state my name again?
Nope. Once is enough.
One last, one thing pertaining to that. If we could put something in that it's not done, and so obviously it has to be done in a year, I think after the fact, after it's been opened up, usually wait a year or something like that. Could we do it when the top coat for the subdivision gets done? That way, there we'd be eliminating any other excess traffic going over it. So, certainly, if that's what it works out, that we end up doing that, we would like it to be, not have to be done immediately. We'd rather do it when that final coat is on for the subdivision and then carry it right straight out.
Just thinking off the top, obviously, you know, nothing's approved yet, but if it did get approved, and we would, I would recommend that we have a limit, though, of how many years, only because, you know, what we've seen over these last ten years, the economy's been so bad, a lot of these subdivisions, we've been chasing developers to give us more money or finish the road because we have binder on some of these subdivisions for eight years. So, I think we would probably do...
I fully understand that and appreciate that, but I think, given the track record of the applicants and the people, and the history and longevity in the community and the town, I don't think we're going anywhere, so...
Yeah, no, and we would, again, I think having a time limit, and maybe you can discuss that with your engineer and your webber's gonna be putting the project together to come up with, you know, what you think would be reasonable. I was watching a conservation meeting, like, I have nothing else to do when I'm home, but I was flicking through, and they looked like they were having fun, unlike the Planning Board, so I wanted to watch. And I did see that they recommended putting guardrail...
It comes across with this, um, what area that they would like to see protected. Well, also, in speaking, I think it was a little bit off the time afterwards, was guardrail or large rocks, boulders, keeping more in line with what the environment is, basically to prevent people from driving through and into a certain area, is what their concern was.
So, the engineer said, well, the Planning Board was fine with it, but it wasn't even... I didn't even see that on Drew Nitsch's comment letter about, I think it was a three-to-one slope, if I'm not mistaken. So...
Are you talking about around the detention parts or around...
No, it was the, I think it was the entrance going in on the left-hand side, maybe?
There was one area I thought it was further down that they were talking about that would require that they ask a fence or some sort of barrier, if I, if memory serves me correctly.
Yeah, so...
It wasn't gonna be an obstacle, so it never was.
Yeah, so it was just something that I saw. I think it's gonna wind up being added to the plan. And then Highway just has a few other comments. One, the CIB analysis, Highway Department concurs with Nitsch engineer comments and does not support this waiver. Now, are we getting a new or an updated waiver list? Because he was gonna reword some of his waivers. The way he worded the waivers, it was like waiving it all together where it's not. So, looking at face value, what the waiver request says, it will be denied, but if he changes it...
Is that the marking of the center of the road?
That is, as construction goes in and the trees get cut, and that center line of the road gets laid out, CIB analysis will be done at that time instead of going in prior to and make it a total mess. So, he just has to reword that, so it's, because it just...
Because I don't believe he was asking for a complete waiver not to do it. He was asking for that specifically.
Right, but if you read it, that's how it came out, so...
If you wanna prove it that way, that's fine, too, but...
Okay. I would suggest, I would suggest that he does give us an updated waiver list...
Yeah, I'll talk to him about that.
Because we told him, I think there was two or three, that if he changed, there's no issues with them.
Right.
Just so we can give Highway a copy of it, and it's part of the plan. Okay, so other than that, I think you're gonna get the information on the...
Culvert?
Culvert?
Yes.
When that was updated and water was installed, and we can let Highway know about that. We don't have a letter from engineer?
No.
He's not requesting anything?
No, not at this point. I think we've already gotten two reviews from him.
Okay. Well, other than that, is there any, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, Frank just wanted me to express his thanks for how expedient the Board has been in handling all of these issues and working with the town planner has been, according to Frank, been a pleasure. So, all the Boards have done exactly as what one would expect.
Okay, very good. So, we will, September 3rd, already...
Summer's done?
Anything on? I don't see nothing.
Just some general items. Actually, six o'clock, I have somebody on for a discussion, Joey Wood.
So, let's do 6:15, just so we can have, in case a Form A comes in and...
And not being able to speak for Frank, I'll let him know as well, and if there's an issue, he can get in touch with me.
Have him, yeah, have him get in touch with the office. Maureen can, she can make an adjustment if that's needed. And I would just like to say it's nice to see Marie Smith...
I thank you, sir.
Up and healthy and happy-looking.
I'm kidding, yeah, but...
Happy-looking as always, big smile, so glad you're doing well.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is continued until 6:15 on September 3rd.
Time to act his way out there?
October?
Time to act.
Uh, September 23rd.
So, if we get, find out about the culvert...
Revised waiver letter.
Revised waiver letter, and let's come up with some thought about how long the, putting the final coat on.
With the installation of the water line?
Yeah, so, if we get those things, I think conservation is...
I think the last, last thing we had from our engineer was still pretty lengthy. I don't know how much they've worked out.
Well...
Well, we did get a comment letter also from Azu. I know there were three or four comments all related to each other about, you know, half inch versus one inch, and I think that Azu came back and said that he doesn't see any need for them to treat more than a half an inch. So, I'll talk to Steve Ventreska about that, because some of those, some of those comments, according to, he wanted feedback from Conservation Agent, and he said, no, they're fine with what they're presenting, so...
And that's without saying. That letter, I already, I told the engineer last time to make sure he gets it worked out, so there's just some minor issues.
And I'll ask Nitsch for a revised letter as well, with all the discussions that have been the feedback, and see where he stands as far as his issues.
All right. Very good. That's that.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye. Next, Kennedy Plumbing, 1635 Broadway, abbreviated site plant modification. Step right up, state your name for the record.
Steve Kennedy.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We're not gonna bite. You can step right up to that microphone there, and Wayne will love to hear your voice. And Wayne is our cameraman and voice coordinator and...
All right. I did give some handouts, so there's, just so you know what's going on. I do have smaller prints if you want them. I think those are the full-size ones. Basically, the property's kind of a different setup. It's got a lot in the back that is residential, and it has in the front, which we're building on now, is commercial. And what I was hoping to accomplish was to, I have a loading dock on the back of the building that I was hoping to get a little bit of the residential spot for just a turnaround. So, there's limited space for a truck to pull up and back in, and I was hoping that a section of that back area could be used just as a basic turnaround, so they can make the corner to back up to the building.
So, when you originally sent these plans in, it kind of stirred up a lot of confusion because it showed parking all along the building where the overhead doors were.
Correct. That was, that was just my chicken scratch, basically. So, I had the engineer redo it, so the parking spaces were all what was needed, the same amount of parking spaces, and it widened up a little bit of the area for getting by, so...
Okay.
The layout kinda worked better with the parking, and it allowed to eliminate the parking on the back, so it would make room for a turnaround.
Where's the parking lot?
Here's, uh, there's a full set standard if you want. Here's, uh, that's basically... If you need big ones, I have them there. So, originally, the zone line, I had spaces all along that back, right along the zone line...
Mm-hmm.
Away from the building, but that would've, as you can see, it would've made it extremely tight for anything to get into the loading docks, so...
All right, do we have, do we have a list of the waivers, John, that are required?
Well, I don't know if any would be required at this point, because he's putting wheel stops in, he's got a sidewalk going, he has a landscape strip around, I believe, three sides of the building, two or three sides of the building?
Yep, the left side coming around and the front side, and then there's a couple spots on the far right.
I understand that, but he moved, did you add these parking spots to the back of the building?
I moved them from where that dotted line that splits the zones, they were on that side, and I pushed it...
And you moved it to the building?
Yeah.
So, by pushing it to the building, now, did you eliminate a landscape strip that used to be there?
No.
And that was always a walkway?
And the parking space, the parking space count is almost identical to what it was.
It is identical, yeah.
So, that was addressed at the first approval?
Yes.
So, basically, then, you have, so you're only changing to have this back area as basically a turnaround? You're not gonna have any parking on there?
Exactly. Exactly.
I checked, I'm sorry, I checked, I checked with the Conservation Agent, the consultant.
They don't have a problem with it because they have a non-jurisdictional wetland, but they don't have an issue with him extending into that residential district close to those wetlands, and I was asked by Burke to speak with the Building Commissioner, and he doesn't have an issue with that, because there's not gonna be any parking in the residential district, and there's not gonna be any actual structure. However, if the Board decides to approve this, I think it would be a good idea, considering the fact that it is going into residential area and closer to a non-jurisdictional wetland. If that turnaround area in the Residential A District were kept either crushed stone or gravel and not paved, so it wouldn't add any additional stormwater runoff, and that way, everything would work as was approved originally.
What's on the plan? What is that little... Is that a landscape edging that you're doing in the back there?
On the far right?
Yeah.
That was just on the other side of the line, on the commercial side, and they, I had them see if it was okay to shift it back. I didn't know if the landscaping would matter, if it was in that part or not, so I had them... I'm basically just trying to open up the parking lot a little bit, so I didn't know if that would matter, if it would go back there.
The turnaround is sitting on top of a proposed recharge system?
There is recharge system in the very front. There's one in the back, I believe, right on the, right on that line as well, yes.
Okay. Is there any issue with the recharge system sitting on a pervious surface? The crushed stone instead of the asphalt?
I can find that out. I'm not 100% sure.
I don't know if Dan would know.
Well, I'm looking, is the recharge system that is in the dotted line, that whole area? I'm assuming that's...
It shows, or is it, it's on the sheet three.
Yeah, so, sheet three, so that's the dotted line, so...
Exactly, yep.
He already has it half, it was already half into the parking area?
Correct.
Half and half, so it's not, that's not changing, and if it's, if it is in the parking area, it's gonna be driven over, so she's, it looks like he's already made allowances for that to be H-20 load for...
Yeah, because that would've been right under the parking spaces as it was before, and the front one is kinda under parking spaces as well.
Well, my, my only thought, seeing that that back section is residential, I don't have a problem with it being used for a turnaround. I don't believe, I don't feel it should be paved, and I don't think anything part of the original plan, including just a shrub bed, should even be on it. I think it should be left almost to a natural state, but he owns it to be able to use it for, again, turning around, making it easier to back into the building, but no permanent structures ever can be built on it. That has to do with the business in the front, unless he would have to get a variance. Now, has any of this, have you gone through the Board of Appeals at all for anything on, okay? So, this is just...
He did originally, when he first came for the abbreviated, Maureen found that he...
Received a variance from frontage, correct?
Yes, at that time. Frontage, it was at 140.
And, right.
Okay, so we got a variance with the frontage, but the whole front piece is business.
Correct.
So, everything that was, that has been approved has been approved on the business piece of property.
Yes.
Well, I don't think that we can approve something that's going on the residential side crossing over by having structures put there. So, that's why I say, if it's left gravel, stone, then I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't have a, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Burke, your opinion on...
I don't have a problem with it. If the biggest thing is the building inspector slash zoning enforcement doesn't have a problem, that's what I was concerned, but from the Planning Board standpoint, no, I've got no problems at all.
Russ?
The only thing, I'm just kinda on a little different note, I'm looking at the arrows on the plan, which seem to indicating the traffic flow?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, that truck's gonna, yeah, what do you have in pulling there for a truck? Because I'm just looking at it like it's gotta pull out of there and take a sharp left turn to...
Oh, coming, coming out?
Yeah, coming out.
We, basically box trucks, delivery trucks, I don't know what the actual length are. Supply, supply...
Not 18-wheel, yeah, not tractor-trailers, just tight turn to...
Yeah, it is.
It's tight all around. But, yeah, they're just, I'm not sure.
You're not having a retail component to your business there, are you?
Well, the two front spaces, basically, I'm gonna try, I'd like to, I have a, basically, it's split up. If you see the architecturals, there's a spot. I'm gonna have the back piece, basically, then there's a 25-by-60-foot spaced garage door type thing for a rent, and then there's a whole front space that I'm gonna basically rent out.
Well, our question is, is it being rented out for retail?
I don't have any renters, so I'm not sure what's going in there unless...
Well, if somebody wanted to come and put in a sandwich shop, would you approve that?
I wouldn't have a problem with it, unless somebody else does.
Well, the only problem that he would have is the zoning enforcement officer would not allow him, he was approved warehouse office. And just so you, just so you're aware, warehouse office, a thousand square feet of office, nothing on the plan says that it's gonna be retail use.
Okay.
So, you just have to be careful to rent it out before you fully understand what you can rent it out to or for, because the calculations for parking is based on warehouse office, not for retail.
Okay.
And I would hate to see you find a tenant and then go to the building inspector, because you would need a, an occupancy permit. If you have two tenants, you're gonna need an occupancy permit for each tenant, and that would require a building permit, and if you have a subway going in there, he's not gonna allow it, because it's not approved, so that means you would have to come back to the Board...
Yep.
And...
And find some parking spaces, and it doesn't look like you're gonna find...
Seating, do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
All of the, each category has its own requirements that you have to follow. If it's resident, restaurant, how many seats, that's so many parking spaces per seat. Warehouse, it's the least amount of space.
Right.
So... So, looking at the drawing, it's...
And I've been doing this for 25 years, and I've yet to see a conceptual that actually looks like what gets built. But this looks like you're going to have flocks of people there all the time.
I have no idea what's going to happen.
Well, again, he, under the approval that he currently has, he can. So I just want you to be aware of that, just so, you know, again...
Are you going to have a showroom?
No. We're strictly office, and, I mean, we store truck tools and that.
Again, that's warehouse, which is what we thought, but...
Exactly. No, no, no.
Looking, looking at this conceptual drawing, I'm thinking...
Well, that's the front section right there, that we're in the far rear. So, you know, I would assume awesome kind of office or the front part.
All right. Well, I don't have a problem, again, like I said, if we make a motion that we approve the line of modification.
Exactly what are we approving? What have we been asked for? Do we have something in writing as to what is being requested?
We're being asked that we relocated, we relocate, they're relocating the parking spaces from the dotted line on the plan in the rear. Would that be...
Yeah. From the rear, about the line of the business district to against the, to along the rear of the building.
Correct.
Should we have a written request? I'm not trying to give them a hard time, but should he request exactly what he wants so we can vote on exactly what he's asking for?
He can, but there's only two items.
Okay.
So I'm going to, we should have had one. Next time, John will have the applicant put something in writing so we know. But relocating parking spaces to the rear of the property from, it was abutting the residential business property line, those parking spaces being relocated to directly behind the building and to allow a gravel or stone area in the residential side for turnaround purposes only.
And it has to be a pervious surface?
And it has to be a pervious surface.
No structures up there?
No structures...
Of any kind?
Of any kind can be built that relate to the business.
As shown on the revised abbreviated site plan, 1635 Broadway, Rainham, Massachusetts, dated August 15, 2015?
That's correct.
And I'll drop down the letter of the approval of the line of modifications and the...
Okay, now, did I miss anything? Those were the two?
Yeah, yeah, we just shuffled parking spaces to gain more room. That's basically all I was looking for.
Okay. So, with that motion made, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, that is all set.
Do you have more of these than we need? If you could use a couple back?
Sure.
This, Maureen, this is for our files?
Yes. Yeah.
Just a quick decision, just to summarize what we discussed, I'll give a copy to the building manager.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Okay, economic development brochure?
Yep, you guys have each got five copies. If you could here to hand them out to anybody you know. Did end up going to Minuteman Press, getting 1,000 copies, so distribution has begun. Yesterday, I delivered copies to Serpent, Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce. They're going to bring copies down to the Fall River Chamber of Commerce. Holiday Inn Express, Carol Sullivan Real Estate and Remax Real Estate over on 138. So I have more places that I want to bring them to, as the board suggested. I'm going to send 10 copies each to Senator Pacheco and Representative D'Amelia in the coming week. So we have 1,000 copies of those, and we're in the process of getting those out.
Well, I think you did a great job working with Serpent and working with the fund, the grant money that was given to Rainham. And let's, the grant money that we received for this was for the commuter rail money.
The South Coast Rail Program.
South Coast Rail Program. I think it's awesome, you look at it, it has great information in it. I guess my only question, did the milk bottle pay to have his pitcher put in there?
No, they didn't.
It's pretty...
Free advertising.
Free advertising, Rainham iconic milk bottle. So I think what we ought to do is stop at the milk bottle and drop some of these off there.
Definitely.
I think they would be pretty...
Please.
Please to pass them out. A lot of times, business people driving into a community that they're not familiar with will stop at a place like that to have a coffee and breakfast and just to meet, you know, meet a local realtor or whatever. So, but no, I think it looks...
It came out really nice.
Yeah, no, I'm pretty impressed with it.
Excellent.
I think it looks nice. We're going to have some of these downstairs in the hall? People can...
I actually have some outside the town clerk's office on the counter.
Oh, good.
So I noticed that she keeps brochures out there, so I put some out there. So anywhere, anywhere I can put them, I will, so.
Good, no, very good.
Metro Volkswagen, we talked about this prior to the meeting. I think it's best if the attorney for that, that business, that establishment come in and talk to the planning board about the recent sale to Matria.
Okay, but before we do that, I'm going to get, I want to see what we approved, what was approved because we were pretty specific about the approval for Volkswagen to go there. When we, right from the very first meeting that came in, they didn't have enough square footage to place that building on that piece of property. And they had three times the space from Kia and Ford. So because it was all in the same ownership, we let them use some of the property from Kia and Ford. It wasn't deeded or transferred over by deed or by plan, but because it was the same owner, we let them use and use the calculations. So basically, if Ford had 1,000 cars they could park there, we let them take, and again, these are, I don't know with a number, we let them take X amount of parking spaces away from that because they were, you know, maybe 300 extra.
Right.
And we let them give it to Volkswagen. Well, whatever we did for that decision, they have to make sure that Volkswagen is legal, that Volkswagen, if it is 100 or 200 or whatever the spaces are...
They need to comply.
That has to, that has to make sure, or else the new owners, which is Matria, is buying a piece of property that doesn't, that doesn't conform to our...
And unloading cars.
Well, and unloading cars was marked on, and again, I would like to see the plan. It was right up, it was right up in the front. There was a row of advertising cars, and then I believe right behind that, on the Kia side, it said load and unload. And if we get a copy of that plan, that belongs, whether it be by easement or by ownership, that belongs to Volkswagen. So, and then also, part of that, now that it's not the same ownership, is cross easements. Utilities, you know...
Sewer run across one property onto another before it gets to our sewer pipe? I don't remember, we haven't looked at it.
I don't remember, so I'd like to get a, and again, if you just pull the plans out, I can always come by instead of, because I'm going to, I want to see them all instead of photocopying, and it'll be easier if I just look at it. And then we can go over the letter, John?
Okay.
Because we'll need to have Burke's legal advice to how it should be worded. So their legal counsel, not only Metro, but we have to notify the new owners, the new owners of Volkswagen if there's something that's not done right.
Did it transfer already or...
Yeah, I drove by the other day, so under new, under new ownership. I was floored. I had, I didn't hear anything, I had no idea. I know Matria put in for Volkswagen when they were bidding on it, and they didn't get it. And they were, you know, upset that they didn't get it. Ford got it, and here they are, selling it to, selling it to Matria. So Matria is very happy with...
Metro not doing well, or did they just get an offer they couldn't refuse?
Well, I know when they were in Middleborough, he said they weren't doing the volume that they would like to see.
Oh, Metro?
Metro. And that's why he wanted to move back to Rainham, figuring, you know, maybe the traffic. Maybe Volkswagen is, you know, you sell X amount of cars a month, and Metro was kind of on the high speed, they sell hundreds of cars a month. And if you're only selling 80 Volkswagens a month, then that doesn't fit there.
Right.
It's almost a burden to them than it is, so. But yeah, so if we get that, that would be good, and I'll, I'll review it, and we'll get Burke's opinion on it before we notify any of them.
Shell station, the building has come down.
Yeah, so the...
Hearing the building commissioner and the board of health agent talk, I think their soil issues seem to have been resolved, and that they've gotten, they've come to the end of it. So I think they're finally able to move forward with the actual development of that site. So that's good news. School department contact update in your package, you should have, I spoke with the school superintendent, and I'm going to start giving periodic reports, maybe not monthly, but quarterly, of new projects that are on the horizon and starting up. So this is the first of those. And she said that would be wonderful, just to have a summary of not just residential projects, but commercial projects as well, because there may be projects come in that may impact their bus routes. So they want to know about all projects. So I'm just going to give them a summary of what's, of what's coming down the road, what's getting underway.
Yeah, no, that was, that was a good thing John had brought, brought up and asked that we check into it. So if they, I know in the past, we've done similar type things with local, and it just never, it never went anywhere, so it's good that they would like to see the information.
So lastly, it's not on this, not in this list, but I know I was asked about, at the last meeting, you asked about the resident near Walmart who was having issues with her septic system. I did check last week with board of health agent, and they have since, they've since connected to town sewer. So they are no longer on septic, they are now on town sewer. So that septic system is no longer going to be an issue. They got an abandonment permit for the exit, for the old septic system, and now they are hooked up.
Very good.
She, she did call and asked me, you know, was wondering what was going on. And when I talked to Dave and found out that happened, I called her back and kind of wondered why she was still so upset. I think she was hoping that somehow there would be a fund where Walmart could reimburse her for all those pumping, pumping she did. But I explained to her that there's, there's, it's impossible to determine whether or not those additional pumpings were because of Walmart or because of a failing septic, an old failing septic system on her property. So she wasn't very happy, but there's no way that, you know, first of all...
With a septic system being well over 20, 30 years old, it's, it's common, and especially, I think, didn't you check, or didn't board of health say that they've been pumping more and more every year?
Yeah, and yeah. There was a gradual buildup where they were pumping two, three times a year over, over the course of three, four, five years. So for a while, they've been doing more pumping that than would normally be expected. So there is evidence to show that, you know, yeah, it may have been a gradually failing septic system.
Well, what happens, as soon as it starts clogging, the stones clogging, it's clogging, and each year goes by, the volume gets less. So you are going to be pumping more because you have less volume. Basically, you have a big holding tank underneath, as those stones get clogged, that's all the holding tank. So the top part is the least amount of volume. So that would make sense that they're pumping, start pumping more regularly.
I explained to her that the board is not holding funds for that purpose. Any funds we're holding are for the completion of the project in that sewer pump station. And I apologize, but I said, you know, we're not holding money for that purpose.
Okay.
That's it.
Invoices, we don't have any?
We do, are they done? Oh, that's because they're here.
That's the main state.
Yes.
Where are easements?
Who just came in, so I'll get you guys a copy to that.
Go minutes?
No minutes.
What ones would you not have?
Okay, just came in.
Copy to copy.
Where'd they come in from?
Nick Harris.
I thought that maybe we had someone new? No? Not yet.
Well, Lee Castiglione is involved in the project.
Is he buying it or is he just...
Yeah, but Nick Harris is still...
He's just putting up houses.
Now, Lee is the developer or the attorney for the developer?
He's the developer. Lee Castiglione is longboat homes.
I knew he was involved, but I thought, I don't know who I thought.
Well, our decision does say that we need those easements before law releases anyway, so it's good to hear.
Okay, invoices, no minutes. Correspondence, correspondence that we had was from conservation, which was for Doe Run. And John already discussed that, that they don't have an issue with, oh no, I'm sorry.
Doe Run, they, they basically...
There was comments where Doe Run, the other one was...
Oh, the...
1650, 35 Broadway, that they don't have issues with the back. Doe Run was...
The comments from each regarding how much of the stormwater needs to be calculated or treated.
Right, so they're, they're working on that. And that was from our zoo. Other than that, that was like having a vacation night. Anything else?
Nothing.
Next time we meet, it's going to be September, and that's a sad...
Forty-four later.
A sad time of year, it's beautiful time, beautiful month for doing yard work and getting all your stuff, but it's sad to see that it went, it went by fast, so.
Oh, by the way, Dan, I did talk to Chris Gallagher, and I, I emailed him. Alice Gonzalez' cell phone number, so he did say he would speak to her and see if he could help her out with her issues with her engineer, so.
Okay. All right, so if nothing else, meeting is adjourned.